Good evening and welcome to the City of New Franklin Council Meeting Wednesday, October 5th. We have one first reading, no second, no third, and no pending legislation. We'll start with our first reading resolution number 22R-57 for Mr. Cotts.
Thank you. We will open Finance Committee meeting at 6:00. And our resolution tonight is a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with American Legal Publishing Corporation for codification of New Franklin city ordinances, online services, and future supplements in declaring an emergency. Go.
We have been talking for quite a while, a number of years, about codifying our current ordinances and adopting traffic and criminal ordinances. And it's, we're about the only ones left out there that haven't done that yet. As sort of aside, it will allow us when, if there are violations and they go to court and there's fines, those fines will come to the city instead of going to the state. But it's really more a matter of just trying to come into the new millennium, I think, and make it easier for the public to see what's out there. So we talked to two different vendors. The legislation tonight is recommending American Legal Publishing Corporation. The fee, there's a $20,000 setup fee, and that is to convert all of the Ohio Revised Code relevant ordinances, traffic, criminal, to New Franklin, also to take our ordinances, codify them as well, our zoning ordinance as well, and it'll all be under a one package. That's their setup cost for that. And then the annual update is approximately $3,000. It's an approximate because it depends on how many revisions are required. And revisions will normally be required when there's a change in the statute, generally the criminal statutes. So when they're amended, and one of the highlights of American Publishing is that they have an ongoing legal review, and they'll notify us through the year. So if there's a change in the DUI ordinance, they'll notify us and we can make that change in our ordinance so that we're consistent with what's going on with the state. The $3,000 is an approximation based upon how many pages you might have of revision in any given year. We considered another vendor. That vendor's setup cost was $11,000, and the annual though was $7,000. And we talked to some others. There were concerns relative to the timeliness of their updating of the criminal and the traffic ordinances. And in some cases, they were two or three years behind, according to information that had been provided to us. And we also received, well, we got a copy of an email from one of, another city in Franklin, I mean, in Southern County, who was switching back to American Legal and said we're kind of, it was a nightmare on the other side with this other vendor. So we're pretty comfortable that this is the right choice as far as the vendor. They represent 800 municipalities in the state, including Green, Bardington, Norton, Dalbridge, Stone, Kent, they all do some work with it. So in terms of timing, it's going to be about a nine to 12-month process. So the sooner we get started, the sooner we can get that.
And American Legal, I, when I go on another city's website, there are ones that are there. So with the codifying of all of our ordinances stuff, and you mentioned that the traffic fines then would come to us, does that change our relationship with Bardington Courts?
No, we talked specifically with them about that. I talked with Lisa Miller from their law department, and also Diane Stevens, the clerk, and it doesn't impact at all.
Okay.
They're perfectly fine.
And what about with not just traffic, but with criminal? Before, or currently, we have the public defender, or the prosecutor that we use and, you know, that we haven't, we've never had to really use. If, as we codify our stuff, then we start incurring some costs there?
No, it's, they'll still provide a representation. And so we do use them in the sense that they're available for prosecution. Occasionally, some of these cases will have a bench trial, and their prosecutors handle them and can, in conjunction with our police. But that's part of our contract with them, and the only difference is what they get cited under. If it was a DUI, they'd be cited under 4511-19A1 of the Ohio Revised Code. Now they're going to be cited under probably what will be 4511-19A1 of the New Franklin city ordinances. So it's the same job for the prosecutor, doesn't change their job at all. And they'll continue to provide the same services.
Question, Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
You said we would get the funds then. Do they get a portion of those funds and then we get a portion?
They get the cost. They always retain some of the court costs.
Court costs.
Yeah, they get the court costs, but not the funds.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't remember after all the jail.
No.
Tomorrow.
I think I knew the answer to that, but I better make sure that when I can have Oda back here.
I brought this up at a meeting back in, actually, September of 2019. I actually come with some budgetary numbers for, you know, American Publishing and Administration Online. I'm just glad to see this is finally moved forward. Thanks for getting this going. Thanks, and to everybody else.
I have another question, but I can't ask what it is.
What's your thinking, Cap? [00:00:39]
Yeah, I'll let him, as usual.
You can ask it during the meeting.
I kind of feel like we should take a meeting on this, take time. I haven't, I personally haven't had a chance to read through the contract. I'm sure it's a very standard contract with every city, and I can't think of any problem that there would be, but, you know, again, off the top of my head. But I'm comfortable either way with other people who are strong on what we're doing together.
I'm comfortable either way.
I think we all agree.
Okay, so we'll ask for time on this then. And we will close the Finance Committee meeting at 6:08.
Anything else that anybody else wants to discuss? Anything from the audience? Then I will call to order the regular meeting for the City of New Franklin at 6:08 on Wednesday, October 5th. Would you rise with the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of September 21st.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Kelly, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Mr. Fetterman.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Motion passes. Three.
Four.
Four, four. Okay. I thought I better ask Dave, he's not here to correct me. We have any public comments?
No.
None? Kelly, you agreed the first reading, resolution number 22R-57?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with American Legal Publishing Corporation for codification of New Franklin city ordinances, online services, and future supplements in declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee, and we'd like to ask for time on Resolution 22R-57.
Time is granted. We have no second readings, no third, and no pending legislation, so I think this is actually our favorite part of the meeting.
All right.
The mayor's report.
Okay, all right, I'll have to warm up. Tennis and pickleball will be open soon, and we'll let you know as soon as it's ready to go, and we'll plan a grand opening and make a reveal out of what it is. The New Franklin Pickleball Association has been formed. We had the folks who were on our NIPS committee came in and talked, and graciously several of them agreed to be part of an association to be supportive of the pickleball courts. That might be financial support now and in the future, assistance with events, et cetera, just a general, a good support group for the pickleball. And we want to thank Robert Keith, one of our journalists here, and Steve Goddard, who was instrumental in putting together the Disc Golf, which has been such a huge success. He unfortunately didn't get out of here soon enough, so he became the president, I think, of the association. So God bless Steve, thank you for volunteering. All right, we are going to engage a town planning practice to do a zoning code diagnostic report. We're anticipating at the end of the comprehensive plan that there'll be some revisions to the zoning code. In the meantime, we have, it's a very antiquated code, and we come up in certain situations and the code doesn't quite meet the mark that it maybe professionally ought to as it relates to a variety of things. Definitions, for instance. So this diagnostic report is not, won't make any changes to the code. It's a preliminary to what we might eventually do for code amendments. It would include a zoning code analysis to identify obsolete and deficient regulations, recommend potential amendments, go to all the general provisions, zoning districts, et cetera, definitions, enforcement regulations. For instance, we've got, we've got a number of zoning violations that carry criminal penalties, but it's really unclear as to who's going to issue the citation. Does a police officer have to come out and do it? Is a zoning officer authorized to do it? I mean, it's that kind of a thing that we want to get a heads up on in advance. Subdivision code evaluation, we adopted several years ago the Southern County subdivision regulations as our regulations, so they're going to do a review of that as well to see if there's anything that's, that isn't necessarily current, maybe isn't favorable to enforcement, et cetera. They're going to review the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals activity, agendas, minutes, decisions, discrepancies, site plans, conditionally use, all of their activities, take a look at what's going on with our BZA and our planning and zoning and say, hey, how are we doing in those regards? Do an administrative assessment as well of our recent planning and zoning applications, staff approval, so see how that offices. Building permit investigation, and it'll also include stakeholder interviews with the mayor, city council representative, city engineer, building officials, consultants, developers, residents. So in a lot of ways, I think this is right on time. What they, what will issue is a diagnostic report to focus on existing regulations and changes, or suggested changes that we might want to consider. That report then will come to council, it'll be a tool that we'll use as we go forward in conjunction, and the timing of this will take about 12 weeks. That report will be out January, and hopefully kind of dovetail with what's going on with the comprehensive plan, and maybe be an additional tool that might be helpful in that regard. So I want to keep counsel, let us speed on that. The, Barry went out, we wanted to do this, we talked, actually, at one time, we were going to try to just dive into zoning code review and come up with a suggested, a new code, revision. And two things, number one is, I think, with comprehensive plan moving down the pipe, it makes more sense to wait until that's concluded, but there may be some things we might want to do in the interim. You might want to do it in the interim, so maybe some changes that we're going to say, hey, listen, this is, these several things are not good, we may want to change those, and then eventually incorporate those same changes down the road. The town planning practice consultant is Fred Guerra, you have heard his name before. At one time, we were going to use him when we were thinking about State Row 93. Barry went out, and there was not a whole lot of people who do this, there were two entities, he reached out to both of them, the second entity, he'd have to tell you the name, I can get it for you, they just weren't responsive. I guess they just weren't particularly interested in trying to do this type of review, they were more interested in doing a full revision of our code. Fred, at Town Planning Practice, urban planner, 40 years of experience, supervised the completion of the Bardington General Development Code, the Todd Falls General Development Code, part-time lecturer in land use and history, member of the American Associated Institute of Certified Planners, received Outstanding Leader in Revitalization from Heritage Ohio, has a master's in public administration, so very well-qualified guy. And we'll get that moving, and we'll have, try to have that report done before the complete plan is done, and use it as a tool then to consider what changes we're certainly going to want to make in the zoning code. So I just want to keep you impressed with that.
So, thanks for, yeah, sure. Question on? One, how are they going to interview community members? How are they, how is that selection going to be made, if he's going to do an official report?
I mean, we'll control that, you know, how he does it, but I think it's really going to be a matter, I'm assuming it will be, they take some selected situations and, you know, how do you feel you're going to deal with it?
Okay, so, so some interviews with people who have had interaction with the zoning code?
Exactly.
Not pick random people?
No, no, you did the process.
And if I understand what you're saying correctly, this is more a review of our practices, policies, and how the policies interact with our practice, how, how, what is in the document gets carried out, not necessarily a review of how anything is zoned. He's not going to be looking at changing any zoning planning in this area.
No, no, it'll be review of the zoning ordinance itself.
Right.
For suggestions, and that's really what, quite frankly, I was most interested in. They have somebody take a look at this and say, listen, where are we off-kilter? What's inconsistent with what's going on out there? You know, I know there are some things, because we found them, and where are we deficient? You know, we have situations come up that people want to, they have an intended use, and we'd be hard-pressed to find out where that use is permitted in the city, because it's, it doesn't meet any of the definitions, it doesn't meet any of the criteria, so we kind of have to squeeze it in somewhere. And we're finding that that's not, well, that's because we've got a code that's probably 20, at least 20 years old, that was inherited from the township. So that was my primary concern, was where are we deficient? Okay? Now, and then where we're deficient, you know, what do you suggest? Do you have a suggestion? All right? And I'm trusting that, you know, this isn't rocket science, I mean, I think we're going to see code to code, you're going to see a lot of similarities in a lot of municipalities. But whether or not we just choose to act on those suggestions, that's up to us.
The suggestions in general are going to be policy-related, not made up these property over there?
No, 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 nothing about what we ought to do with a particular parcel, or where we ought to do it. Okay? But, no, really just the, you know, the supplement, the language of the code.
The language of the code.
What was the fee for this?
$9,600. All right, we'll keep your caution there. And I will say this, I mean, we've had, well, we had one go to suit, and I think it might already be in suit, the decision that came out of, let's have some court of appeals right now, that came out of our planning and zoning and part of the BZA. And so there's been, you know, there's, there's been some, I wouldn't say dissatisfaction, but there's been enough things over the course of years, I'm saying, those things happen when you don't have a tightly written document, and you're not following, carefully following proceedings. And so I think those are things that we need to tune in on as a city, because we're going to see more, not less, whether we want to, or whether we don't. And I think it's a matter of having a document that, you know, is, is strong enough to be responsive to what comes. Whether you want to allow it, or whether you don't want to allow it. It's probably more important when you don't want to allow it than it is when you want to allow it. And you've got to have a document that will stand up when it ends up downtown. All right, speaking of BZA and planning and zoning, it was suggested that by a couple people that maybe we want to consider raising when we pay them, we pay those folks $40 per meeting, and it's $480 cap. And they, I think they spend more than hours' time, and some of these meetings go on in a relatively long time. My understanding, my experience has been that most of these folks go out and they do investigations before the fact, so it seems like maybe they ought to get paid a little bit more. We've looked around, there's a, Green, a country just went to $50 a meeting, Green pays their folks $1,500 a year, but they're a little busier than we are. So I just want to, I'm probably going to propose something maybe in the $60 range, has some increase, it hasn't been increasing in quite some time, and we don't want to steal from these people, but nobody's getting rich from it, but we might want to raise that a little bit, so I'll let you know. Oktoberfest, Sunday, October 16th, be there, we're going to have another good time. That's going to be from noon to 6:00 PM. We've got the polka man, we've got the German dancers, two different groups coming down. It's a free event, and we've had a lot of fun, and we're righteous to kick that off again, and gee, it'd be a nice bad day like this. And then the last thing, I wanted to recognize Stephen Michael Wynn, and he is a Judy Jones, on behalf of council, is going to be presenting a certificate of achievement to him. Judy, is okay, since Mom's jumping in to talk about this?
Of course.
Okay. And that Stephen Michael Wynn, on August 11, 2022, he was designated and achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. So we have another Eagle Scout in the City of New Franklin, and his Eagle Scout project was refurbishing the veterans' markers at the Manchester Cemetery. There were over 200 of these, and he did a fabulous job, and it's very much appreciated to talk about the gift that's going to keep on giving. So we want to honor and acknowledge Stephen Michael Wynn and congratulate him on his achievement as Eagle Scout. That's all I got.
Thank you, Paul. Jack, do you have anything on the comprehensive plan committee?
Not really, other than, you know, since we got the legislation passed last week, it's waiting for the third-day waiting period, and there is a steering committee meeting scheduled, I think I remember the date, does anybody remember for sure? I think it's January the 11th. You know, let me just verify, I don't want to speak out of turn. Not looking very prepared here, I'm almost certain it's January the 11th, which is a little ways off, but by the time we get the survey going, we had this conflict with the election, and we have the election that goes out, we're shooting to have the survey results back somewhere mid-December, so then that pulling all the data together process will happen, and then we'll start meeting again and we'll get it rolling. So anybody out there that's on the steering committee, you should start seeing some communications happening here.
Thank you. Susan?
Besides our regular business, where we started work on the 2023 budget, we had meetings today, Kevin and Jack were there, and we went over a lot, a lot of the budget, and we also had the fire department, did their part of it. Tomorrow, we have the service department and the police departments go through. Once we get all those numbers in and have discussed that, then we, then I will put them in the spreadsheet. It's not, it's not going to be big, I made it smaller, and then we'll get that out to you so that you can look at it before I translate it into a resolution, where I just do the first, you know, the personnel services and other charges. You'll have time to look at it, even if you weren't at this meeting, and be able to contact myself, or you can even talk to Kevin or Jack, who have been there, and, and ask questions, and we'll be happy to, you know, explain anything that you see. So I'm hoping to get that out, I will look right away as soon as we get this updated, and then after that, we should have the resolution out to you by the first meeting.
That's super.
It went, it went very well. I mean, I, Kevin might want to talk a little bit about it too, but it was, it was very nice today, we had the fire department, the administration of the parks and all that, and it's refreshing to see, not that there was ever anything done that people couldn't see if they wanted to, but for us to be involved in it in this process, I think, to represent council. If you guys have questions, now you can ask us, you don't have to beat Sue up all the time. I think it's a good, a great thing. You think beginning in November will have a resolution?
That's the plan, that's the plan. So you should have, if you want to take three readings, you should have, you know, plenty of time to do that.
I would echo what Jack said, I thought it was good conversation, I thought it was a great process, and I appreciate that we're looking at this point or involved.
Well, and certainly from administration, mayor's office, that I speak for the departments too, they, they were, they were happy, they were pleased that the council had a look, so it was well-received on all that.
And because Paulie always said before that, you know, the easier our jobs are.
I think that's true, and I appreciate looking forward when some of us could not make it, so it really is important. Thank you, Susan.
Sure.
Any old business?
I have a couple things.
All right.
First of all, I began with the budget meetings, I wanted to thank, thank you, the administrative staff, for making this radical change. I know we, you know, it's like, oh, we're having meetings, and yeah, we're going to do it by November, stuff like that, but I realize this is a big change for, for you and your department, and, and I certainly appreciate the effort that you're putting into it to make this happen for us, and, and I think it's going to be a good thing for all of councils, so I just wanted to say, say thank you for that. Mary, you mentioned about increasing the fees we pay members of the BZA and the National Commission, you made a comment about the BZA members go out and do investigations. And I attend meetings on a semi-regular basis, maybe, and, and pretty much every time, these guys talk about when they work, when they went to the property, when they saw it, they ask questions about what they saw from the property. So they are going out there, they are taking the time to, to look at what's going on, have a clear understanding. So it's not just a technical meeting here. So I, you know, I agree with, you know, we can do something for them. Fantastic. I also want to thank you for what you're doing with hiring people to come in and help the city with the codification of our ordinances, get it, get it a professional organization that knows where we're going, knows how to do it, prove them results throughout, you know, pretty much any city website you go to, both that's, that's them, so they have a good thing, having the person come in and look at our zoning. I think that's, that's fantastic. If there are recommendations, I just, you know, anybody out there on the steering committee has any concern, if there aren't any recommendations and that we decide that it's probably something that we need to change, then that will not affect the steering committee at all and their, their mission. And, and anything that, that we feel as council that we may want to go ahead and change now ahead of the steering committee, the comprehensive plan, doesn't mean we can't change it again as, as we get further into it. So I'm very excited about the person coming in, and, you know, as a city, we have a lot of great people that work for us, but we don't necessarily have the, you know, the professionals out there that are, are experts in a certain field, or experts in this and that. And the more we can use those resources to help, not only help the city, but to help individual departments, whether it's the fire department, whether it's the service department, whether it's administration, to help the departments become better at their jobs and be, you know, see things that they may not have even known about, because, you know, even though they may be up on trade issues, like, like the police department, oh, you know, we, you know, we do all this trainee stuff. Well, have you thought about running the department maybe a little bit different? What if you did, oh, ooh, never thought about that, you know, that type of thing, because now you're, you're bringing in another set of eyes coming in. So I think it's fantastic that we're trying to take advantage of those things.
I agree.
So, that's all I have for, that's the old business.
We're going to go into new business if you want.
Well, I mean, I don't want to, we'll step away from old business if somebody else has some old business.
You mean in the last, we'll check. Any old business? No, we're going to hand it over.
New business, okay, sweet. Our streaming and videoing and et cetera. I've noticed in the last two meetings, looking at Facebook, going back to looking at the videos, the quality of the videos, the quality of the sound has improved tremendously. We can see everybody, we can hear everybody just talking out there in the audience, sometimes they need to be quiet because, but the, the quality of the video is so much, is fantastic, it really looks like a professional job. I've noticed that our videos are not being posted on YouTube, and the last YouTube video is from April or May, and that's, that's a concern for me, because I've mentioned in the past that if we just do Facebook, not everybody wants to sign up for Facebook, and you can watch videos on YouTube without joining, without being part of the YouTube club. So I'd like to see that, but I'd also like to see what we can do to maybe expand our video capabilities as such. video capabilities as such, and, you know, maybe it's something that we could look at the rescue money, ARPA, whatever, American Rescue Act money, whatever that is, where we can make sure that we're able to video and post different meetings, like, on YouTube there are BZA meetings, but we haven't, there, there hasn't been a recent BZA meeting on Facebook, so, you know, to have the capability within the building to, if there's going to be a meeting, that, a public meeting as such, that we're able to, without too much difficulty, you know, start that process, we've talked about, some committees have talked about having, you know, maybe a committee meeting before the council meeting, and then there's questions about whether that needs to be public, or whether it needs to be videotaped and streamed, and, and so to be able to have that in place. And then, with like the BZA meetings, a lot of times, people are talking about different things, referencing, and this may be way out there, I don't know, but to have the ability for that information that, that the guys, the guys and women are up here are looking at, and the, the people, you know, whether it's their blueprints or whatever, to be able to have that displayed on the screen, where people in the audience can see what's being talked about, people on, you know, video or on watching it, would be able to see exactly what's going on, as opposed to, hmm, wonder what they're talking about, type thing, to just, you know, get out more information, we have a guest speaker that, you know, has things that they want to present, and they, you know, maybe they come around and pass it out, but being able for them to project their, their stuff, so that everybody in the audience be able to see that. I know that's a, that's a big, big adventure, and I have no idea what that would cost, or, you know, what's possible, what's not possible, but I'd like to see us try to move to that, and, and see what we can do for something like that, so, but I especially like to see our meetings, all of our meetings hit on, on YouTube.
I would like to second that, and I would be in full support of having, you know, a recording system in here that could be, you know, even if the quality isn't perfect at this point, to start moving in that direction, so that, you know, we could put an announcement out, say there was eight pieces of legislation on here for the finance committee, and we wanted to sit down and spend some time, we could put a public notice out without being too complex, be able to report the meeting. I, I couldn't agree more, I think it'd be helpful for the city, and I think it's a great statement, I appreciate everything you said.
Talk with the people that know how to do these things.
Yeah, in fact, you're right.
Not that we do.
Anybody else has?
That would be hiring that guy right now.
Yes, Robert would be the one, he has made all of it possible.
One of the things I want to mention, I've read the police department's doing a lot of cruiser, I don't?
Oh, yeah, glad you mentioned that, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's, yeah, it's, this Saturday, from ten to one, but you have to contact the city, and it's, it's posted on our, our website, or you just call up here to the city, and give an address, and they'll come over on Saturday, and they'll, you could be there to greet them, or you can put it in the front plainly marked box or bag, and they hope to fill more than one cruiser, so they'll be going around, it's a great, great event for the officers too, that was their idea entirely, brought that to us, and thanks, Kevin, for mentioning that, I appreciate that.
This food, food, brother?
Yeah, the typical stuff that you would, you know, dry food, canned goods, packaged goods, those types of things.
And we can just drop it off too, they don't have?
They could do that as well.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, can you drop it off up here?
Sure.
Because a lot of people probably would prefer doing, well, they might.
They could drop it off at my house, and that way I'd move better, I'd go, yeah.
That's right.
I was going to say, my neighbors get excited when a cruiser pulls in, so.
They probably are used to it, Jack, it's amazing. Kevin, did you have anything else?
No, everything else is, I hadn't really gotten covered.
You do have something else?
Oh, it's recovered.
Okay, then I'm, I have something else, I have a new business, we're mentioning businesses every week, and my business this week is one that all I have to say is, Dave Galloway, Mr. Electrician, he is all-time favorite, named anything, he can do it, and the sweetest man alive, I am going to get out his number, don't make me through this, three three oh six nine seven three three oh one. Okay, now who do you have?
I have Mr. DePump, Mr. DePente Malpont, so this is Bill Roth, Bill Roth's father started the business sixty-two years ago, he's located right at the southwest corner of Mimicilla and Manchester Roads, build, install cars, he has pump repair, submersible pumps, a whole gamut of things, emergency-type pump repairs, stuff like that, so.
Lot of commercial too, he works, he works his estate a lot too, I know, for different inspections, because you have to have special people to go in to do them, so we need two good ones.
And I don't know if I mentioned this, I guess, before, but I'll do it, and I'll probably do it a few more times, Manchester Hardware, Manchester Hardware, it is a, it should not be a well-known secret, we're so fortunate they're up there, and it's amazing the number of people I've talked to who've, gosh, I mean, I hate to say this about them, but, gosh, they forget, you know, I need some, I'm running down to Ace, or I'm running, you know, and they have a tremendous selection up there, their pricing is as good or better than, than anywhere, it's, they really have a really nice hardware store up there, full service, so we need to do everything that we can to support that, that business, we're so fortunate to have them there.
They are very helpful.
Yes.
With, with anything, they'll help you out, if they don't have it, don't get it, and, you know, you know, they'll call their other stores, and, you know, the advocate can come down and get it for this guy, or order it in for you, I mean, they, they are, you know, right there to help you out, and, and they know what they're talking about.
Yeah.
And, oh, you're right, so many times, we use people all the time, but we forget to mention them, and I think that's really sad too, word of mouth, because if someone says, hey, can you get this, that, or the other, you're right, we should say, of course you can, it's right here, so you're right, you bring that to our attention, that's good. We did old business, new business, public questions, Ms. Sue, do you have a question?
Yep.
Oh, do we have any reason for an executive session? Then I would ask one adjournment. All the favor?
Aye.
Kelly, would you do a roll call for us?
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Gargit? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Betterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Our next scheduled meeting is October nineteenth, and six o'clock here at the company.